Good evening, everyone. A little problem to work. Roll call, please.
Councilmember voting, Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Schrider?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Kyle Phillips, Grace and Pilgrimage Church? Good evening.
God. Let's bow our hearts and heads together. Lord God, how wonderful it is together back in this room. It's been a long time and we just received that as a grace and maybe give you thanks for that, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity, Lord, to deliberate, to argue, to get excited as we were pressed for the Lord's positions and perspectives. How wonderful it is that we live in a place where that's accepted. Well, I just pray that, Lord, as we share together, that there'd be a great sense of unity, of togetherness, as we seek what is best for our community. Thank you, Lord, for this time. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Ready? Salute.
I congratulate you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed at the effort are considered to be routine and not controversial by City Council. Consent items to be considered first and be approved by one motioned member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If a comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed. Further consent agenda to be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning the item before the action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say anything on the consent agenda removed for a separate discussion? Anyone on the council?
No.
Do I have motions approved, consent as presented? I'll make that motion later.
Hold second.
Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember voting, Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schrider?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was... Sorry. It was five eyes from everyone.
Thank you. Next item is audience oral written communication. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to bring something before the council that's not on the agenda tonight? All right. Seeing no one rushing to the podium. It's okay, we can do this. All right. First item is item number two, Lehigh Hansen Cement Company, update information. Good evening. Good to see you.
Honorable mayor, council members, staff. Is this the first time you've been back in person here?
Yes.
In here.
Crazy. It's great to be here tonight. As some of you know, I don't live here anymore. I live in this horrible place called Carlsbad. We're also having a heat wave. Yesterday got seventy-five. So it's been really horrible.
Probably with the breeze, too.
A little bit, yeah. But it really is great to be here. You know, Carlsbad, of course, is a great place to live, but it's not to Hachvey. You know, as I was driving in here, a little bit heavy in the chest, it's the people. I really miss all of you, the interaction with all of you, and the feeling of community. You just don't get that elsewhere and it's just great to be here. Although I moved away, I still work for the same company, a little bit different role, but there's been some changes at the plant and there's been some changes with the company. So we thought we'd just come tonight and give a real brief update on what's happening. And so I guess the big one here is that Lehigh Hansen sold the west region to a company called Martin Marietta. Martin Marietta... Let's see, you can go to the next slide there. Whoever's doing that. I'm looking at it. So Martin Marietta is a fairly big company, twenty-two point three billion. The purchase price for what Heidelberg sold was two point three billion. They paid cash. So I know that for some people that are independently wealthy, like Michael Davies, two point three billion cash is nothing, but for me, that's a lot of money to have in your pocket. So that gives you an idea of the company, what they have to offer. It's in the FTC process right now. We expect that September first will be the closing date. Next slide, please. So you can see there the blue dots all over and some of the other colors. So those are the areas that Martin Marietta has businesses in. And then in the shaded area over on the left-hand side, that's what Lehigh Hansen sold. So it's basically a little bit of Oregon, all of California. We have a little bit in Nevada and Arizona. So it's obviously a fantastic fit because Martin Marietta has nothing on the west coast. So it's a strategic move for them to move, to grow and develop. They're in pretty much the exact same business line as we are in that they have some cement plants, they have ready mix, hot mix, asphalt, agri quarry, sand gravel, and that type of thing. So it's just a really good fit. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I haven't spoken with a single employee yet that is unhappy about this purchase. Martin Marietta is a US-owned company, been around since around nineteen fifty-something. So they're not as old as model font, but been around for a while. It's American-owned company, they're in great financial shape, same business line, they don't have anything in the area, so it's just, there's no duplication. It's all really good for us. So we're very excited about it, great company. So the next item that I have to introduce, or personally have to introduce, is we have a new plant manager, his name is Blaze Moran. And I say there he's newish, and I said that for a couple of reasons. He hasn't been the plant manager for that long, but he's been with the company for quite some time and maybe... Come on up here, Blaze. Perfect. He's a good man who I've known for quite some time. He's a man of honor and integrity, trust him. But that's important, it's important for all of you to know that he's not going to lie to you. What he says is the truth, so just let him say a few words.
Thanks, Craig. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's really a pleasure to be here, to see you all. And like Craig said, myself, I'm very excited to become part of Martin Marietta. Obviously, we don't know yet until the state responds, and we really integrate with Martin Marietta, their philosophies and what drives Martin Marietta. But being a United States, American-owned company, we're excited about that. We're excited of some of the things that we've seen Martin Marietta do in other parts of the country. And we're really excited to see what Martin Marietta can house you here. For me, I would just say, I am really excited and looking forward to working with each of you and working with the council and the city to see how we can partner and engage and work on community outreach and what we can do with the facility to help City of Hachvey. We don't want to lose what Craig has worked hard for over the years, what Craig has done interacting with the city and the community and outreach programs. And I very much want to continue that. So I look forward, again, in the future, whatever that means, and I'll be looking for soliciting input. If there's anything we can do, please reach out to the facility, reach out to me, and I'll be back in the future meetings as well to talk to everybody and see how we can stay engaged and help each other.
Thank you. You've been a great partner with the city over the years and I'm sure will continue.
You were just going to ask for a while.
Well, for some sort of reason.
Welcome back. Yeah.
Any questions from anybody?
I just want to say, I never met you, Craig, but I heard wonderful things about your community involvement. Appreciate you coming back and making this transition seamless. I just appreciate the relationship we have with the folks in our region that are employing our community and good partners, and certainly that's been the case, and it sounds like that commitment remains in your presence in returning from crying yourself away from beautiful San Diego area. So just really good to see you and meet you, having been so much good, and looking forward to day caring more from the community and continue to work with the team.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something, just, you know, I'm a resident, you started it.
I'm going to sit down.
I've known Mr. Mifflin for many, many years, and I do appreciate everything you've done for this community and wish you nothing but the best, Craig. You've been a lot of looney for a long time. I might be insulting you in front of the public, but you know...
No, thanks, Craig. I will do, and welcome to Hachvey, sir, and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, next item will be item number six, disbursements and bills for RSI control.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself for finding an employee of RSI controlling.
All right. Are there any public comments on item number six for RSI controlling disbursements and bills? Anyone on the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second, Matt.
Good motion and second. Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember voting, Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schrider?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Take four zero vote to authorize the disbursements and bills for RSI controlling with the recusal from Mayor Proton Davies.
Thank you. Item number nine, Assistant to the City Manager, Annual CPI-U Refugees Collection Rate Adjustment.
Corey? Thank you, Mayor Smith, and council members. We brought this part of the council back on June 12th, so I'll be quick with the summary here this evening, but the city currently contracts with WM. I'm trying to work with them on their new rebrand, formerly known as Waste Management, for our refuse and recycling services. As part of the agreement, they are allowed to request an annual rate adjustment in alignment with the CPI-U for water, sewer, trash, US average for the twelve-month period beginning April 30th. Our municipal code allows the City Council to approve that rate adjustment via resolution. Back on June 12th, the council tabled the item for discussion in order for a Waste Management rep. To be on hand to answer questions about service-related issues, and we do have several in the audience this evening, we'll give an opportunity to answer any questions in just a moment. So what they're asking for this year, going back to the CPI-U, is the rate increase, three point three five percent is the CPI-U that they're using. And that would roughly, for your trash cart service, be fifty-seven cents a month, and then depending on the other additional services or if you're a commercial customer, those rates increase accordingly. So that's the first part of the item this evening. And secondly, during some of our chats with Waste Management and others about our current franchise agreement, Waste Management actually took the agreement, they had it amended and took it over from Ben's sanitation at the time. And so what in that agreement was the kind of ten-year sunset clause, an automatic renewal provision. And so the term was September first, two thousand, to August of two thousand and ten. And then what happened, though, is the termination of every twelve-month period, another ten-year clock would start. And I think initially, back in the nineteen seventies, this was what in, this was to help Mr. Benz actually get funding to start his company to eventually service the city of Hachvey. So they assumed that part of the agreement, and there is a clause inside our contract where either party can terminate the automatic renewal by giving these thirty days prior written notice to the other party, set the termination, and that would start the ten-year clock. Now, we're looking to exercise that right, not to terminate the agreement, but just the automatic renewal portion. We believe that Waste Management, WM, will be our contract caller for many decades to come, giving state law changes, recycling additions, and our franchise agreement is very thin. Like I said, it was assumed from a very long time ago. So both parties are pretty much in agreement, we probably need to go back and renegotiate a new agreement, and so part of that is this automatic renewal process. So we are seeking tonight to also, along with the CPI-U, instruct the city manager in writing to alert Waste Management of our wishes to determine that automatic renewal, which would effectively start a ten-year clock, and then probably in a couple, three years, once SB thirteen eighty-three and organic requirements come into play, we'd probably put all of our agreements under one new franchise agreement. So that is our, that is the second part we've added since our last meeting when it came with this item. As far as fiscal impact goes, most of the services are billed by the city with all revenues less than ten percent included, and the franchise period being paid to WM for their services. So our recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the requested refuse collection rate adjustment, and then in a separate motion, recommending the City Council terminate the automatic renewal in section two and authorize the direct City Manager to send written notice, set the termination of Waste Management by email and certified mail. And we do have Steve Joshman, Fredy Higgins, Larry Christie, Ashley Cortez are all here tonight from WM, and they're happy to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council. Certainly glad to be here, this evening, glad to be here in person, certainly from standpoint, I think we've all struggled with the non-SUAM meetings, a little much these days, so good to be back in person. It's a beautiful day to be here in Hachvey, certainly a beautiful night for a council meeting. I think Corey covered all those issues, specifically with the changes that are coming down the pipeline. I don't think that you want to sugarcoat the fact that the state of California is really getting aggressive with its climate change goals. What that means for you and I is that the city of Hachvey is going to have to do some things different as it handles its waste recycling. So working together with the city, we're committed to making sure that we come up with a plan that addresses those state requirements in a way that is efficient, positive, and certainly safe. And so very much in tune with what Corey presented, and was happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. The audience like to ask any questions? Questions on the council?
I would say that obviously we did assume this agreement from the Benz family companies. Paul and Joan did great services to this community. I know they've worked very, very hard to live up to their reputation as being a part of this community and being involved in the community. And to that extent, we are involved with Chamber, the E.C., many local organizations, including the Hachvey, Advanced Hachvey Foundation. Certainly wanted to be involved with events like the Fourth of July, which we were, with many other local companies that are involved in the community. So we expect that to continue for years to come. We love doing business here and look forward to throw our partnership to you.
Thank you. Any council requests?
Hi. I personally have my trash picked up, right because rain, but my phone raves off the hook a lot from other people who aren't as happy as I am. And the proverbial stuff runs downhill. They call me, they call the city manager, he calls staff, they call you, and we want to get a more smoother operation, I guess. And people don't call with petty complaints, they're calling because they miss me again this week, you know? Or one complaint I get is about recyclables. When we put them out, they might get picked up at eight or nine, that night, or not at all, or the next day, and I do have that problem. But I have no major complaints, except that I want people in the city to be happy with you.
Sure, sure. And certainly we heard your comments from last meeting, they don't fall on deputies, that's for sure. We did go back and working with the city's own data, over the last twenty-one weeks, about represented approximately forty percent of the year, and there were thirteen confirmed complaints. Certainly that's thirteen too many. I think we share the same goal that it really should be zero, but considering the challenges, specifically that we had to deal with coming out of COVID, I'm not saying that's an excuse so much as the circumstances were a little tough. And being in the business that we are, being a frontline-centered business, we didn't have the order-from-home option, there were challenges that we had to overcome. Certainly it's our goal to get every collection completed as scheduled, on time, in the safest, most reliable manner. So like I said, we've been working with the city, analyzing the data, looking for those opportunities to address whatever those issues are that may come up, and we've really gotten ourselves in a great spot here, addressing those in fairly short order. In fact, for all of the service requests that were placed, that would be eighty-six per year through the city, that on average, they were completed in less than a day. So as soon as we're getting them, and that's everything from the lid on my container got broken, I have a billing question, we're really working hard to make sure that whatever the issue is, that the residential business has, that we're addressing it in fairly short order.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Davies said... I need to recuse myself. I apologize, Josh. I do business with Waste Management, my company does, so I think it'd be best if I just recuse myself at this point. I apologize, especially before you stepped up, but I thank you for your time and you know.
No, no problem. We want to continue doing business with RSI, so we very appreciate it.
Okay. I think that's all of the questions. So do I have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase in refuse collection rates in accordance with the CPI-U for water, sewer, and trash, US average, and direct the City Manager to send written notice by email and certified mail, including return receipt request to terminate? Phil?
I'll start over. Do I have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase in refuse collection rates in accordance with the CPI-U for water, sewer, and trash, US average, and direct the City Manager to send written notice by email and certified mail, including return receipt request to terminate the automatic renewal in section two of the amended and restated agreement with Waste Management?
Corey, that resolution doesn't cover, that doesn't cover the City Manager authorizing that.
That was a separate motion, so we want to be the resolution for the CPI-U and a separate motion to direct the City Manager...
The resolution is just for the CPI.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a separate motion on directing the City Manager to terminate the automatic renewal.
So what resolution will be?
Resolution is just for the CPI.
Okay.
So then the direct City Manager to terminate the automatic renewal would be a separate motion. It's not part of the resolution.
All right. Do I have that motion also?
So the resolution is one first?
You want to take it separate?
Yeah.
All right. The first motion is for the CPI-U.
Two votes.
Okay.
On second.
Roll call, both, please.
Councilmember voting, Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schrider?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Take four zero vote with the recusal from Mayor Proton Davies to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase in refuse collection rates in accordance with CPI-U for water, sewer, and trash, US average.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to direct the City Manager to send written notice by email and certified mail, including the return receipt request to terminate the automatic renewal in section two of the amended and restated agreement with Waste Management?
My question.
On second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember voting, Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schrider?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Take four zero vote with the recusal from Mayor Proton Davies to direct the City Manager to send written notice by email and certified mail, including return receipt request to terminate the automatic renewal in section two of the amended and restated agreement with Waste Management.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you all for attending. Item number ten, it's the second reading and adoption ordinance regarding short-term rentals. Corey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. And council members, once again, this was introduced at our last meeting on June twenty-first, which was also served as a public hearing for this ordinance, since ordinance had regulations and requirements for operating short-term vacation rentals in the city of Hachvey. We continue to draw tours and attention, as I mentioned prior, our proximity outdoor ventures, the ADA with wine industry, special several events, which draw thousands of visitors, as we saw by our Fourth of July festival. So as a result of attention for the short-term vacation rentals, utilize single-family housing for a hotel-like vacation stay, could be an attractive option for property owners and visitors alike. Those are things like Airbnb, VRVO, Turnkey, HomeAway, even larger booking sites such as hotels.com and booking.com now give you a short-term vacation rental option. So the city supports this as a business practice, but also understands the need to regulate these potential short-term vacation rentals to protect the quality of life, safety, and zoning standards currently in place in those single-family neighborhoods. We're not aware of any active short-term rentals in the city limits, but we did prepare for that with the proposed ordinance. The summary was in June sixteen, St. Anthony's, and also introduced at a public hearing on June twenty-first. Real quick, the proposed language suggests regulations and permitting requirements for home or property owners wishing to operate a short-term vacation rental, things like building code inspections, business tax certificate, microrequirements in place for local hotels, living in part with hotels. Other cities have been initiated with these short-term vacation rentals, negatively impacting single-family neighborhoods due to lack of regulations, so we want to make sure we're not in that boat. Some will be charging eighty percent of the transient occupancy tax. Our municipal code currently requires any lodging place offering lodging for five or more people for less than thirty days to be required to pay that, so not all qualified, but some of our units may. But also, this would pretty much impact the TOT for anybody that has over two bedrooms in their potential short-term vacation rental. And again, just trying to protect the single-family neighborhoods with that ability to revoke a business tax certificate, should those, basically the system be abused, it be a code enforcement or regular sort of chronic nuisance for the Hachvey Police Department or other violations of the municipal code. And again, just to remind everybody, this only applies to short-term vacation rentals. Those are rentals that offer stays for less than thirty days. No provisions of this ordinance apply to any other forms of rental housing. So again, no fiscal impact at this point, just because we don't have any of these in existence that we're aware of, but like I said, some potentially could be in the future. So staff recommends adopting ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hachvey, adding chapter eight dot six eight to title date of the attached municipal code to regulate short-term vacation rentals. And the title of the ordinance, the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hachvey adding new chapter eight dot six eight to title date of the attached municipal code to regulate short-term rentals. And we have to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for... Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question regarding this? Anyone on the council?
Corey, you said you had none at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not, you know, once in a while, we'll, you know, we'll just look and see, you know, on Airbnb, that sort of thing. I know there's a couple that operate out in the county area, I think there's a Yert and Alby Morris for rent off the trees, but not in the city limits yet. But I know there have been some developers that have told us they're redeveloping downtown properties with the potential of using that as a short-term vacation rental. And so we just want, we kind of figure there might be a couple of those in the queue. So we just want to be prepared because a lot of other cities have had to play catch-up and have been dealing with an onslaught of these things, and then it's much tougher to regulate it after there's already established business practice in place.
And so that excludes Dalian and Bear Valley that have these already?
Yeah, there was an exclude that was just before the city limits. Like I said, downtown seems to be the sort of attractive potential, just because of the size of the homes and the proximity to special events and all that sort of stuff.
Because people say to me, it's huge.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Corey. I'm glad that we're ahead of the game and not...
I'm glad that we're ahead of the game and not responding to multiple complaints. It's a lot easier to do it this way. I know the ones we've stayed at, there's a lot of rules. But as you sign up for a rental like that, there's very strict rules on how you behave in someone's house in a neighborhood.
So yeah, some people approach it in a different way. They approach it that they're staying in somebody's home and they're a guest and they behave accordingly. Other people use it as party hats, and so that's kind of what we're trying to avoid with this ordinance.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion as stated by Corey? As well by Tyler Long?
One more minute. Go ahead. I'll make a question. Second.
There's a motion and a second, call both please.
Councilmember Volun Corp?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schirner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
With a 5-0 vote to adopt the ordinance at chapter 8.68 to title a detached municipal code to regulate short-term rentals.
Thank you. Item 11, airport manager reports a grant agreement for the relocation and reconstruction of South Side Parallel Taxway and connecting taxways, drainage improvements. Action?
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. As a bit of background, the city is going working with the FAA since August of 2014 on relocation and reconstruction of the South Side Parallel Taxway and connecting taxways and drainage improvements at the airport. The environmental assessment was completed in 2009. Construction design base is nearing completion, which will pass user outreach in late August with our tenants. In January of this year, city staff submitted a pre-application to the FAA for the first phase of construction, which focuses on drainage improvements specifically, the construction of the new drainage basin. The application has since been approved by the FAA and the grant agreement, which is included as an attachment to the support, has been received. So you will see in that agreement, it's on Phase 2 of the project, which again focuses on the construction of the new drainage basin. If all goes well and as planned, you should see an agreement in 2022 for the remainder of the project, which is actually the bulk of the construction. So as far as fiscal impact, we are receiving 664,000 in FAA grant funding. There is no matching grant that's here with the city, so it's not, nothing out of our pocket. So this is a great year and something we really need to focus on, take advantage of. So the staff recommends that the council approve the agreement to the city attached fee and FAA to approve the airport drainage erosion control as part of the relocation and relocation of the South Side Parallel and connecting taxways project, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public? To the council? Thank you. Do I have a motion that's presented?
I still do.
Oh, sorry. There's a motion and a second, call both please.
Councilmember Volun Corp?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Schirner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
With a 5-0 vote to approve the agreement between the city attached fee and the federal aviation administration to approve the airport drainage erosion control as part of the rehabilitation and relocation of the South Side Parallel and connecting taxways project, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign. Thank you.
It's always nice getting our tax money that we send out back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Item number 12, developer service and rent reports. Jay?
Evening, mayor and council members. I have several items for you tonight. So the first one follows on Ashley's previous report. The FAA does grants a little different than other agencies. You actually have to secure the bid before you can secure the grant. So you just, we just secure the grant, which means in this case that we already have the bid in hand for the construction. So the first item I have tonight is to award the attached municipal airport storm drain improvements and detention basin construction project. And so again, we were just awarded funding from the FAA and Caltrans for this project, grant amounts are 664,430. We opened bids for this project on June 16th, and the listing of the bid results received are listed in the staff report. Briefly, an explanation of the difference between the total bid amount and base bid. The base bid is based upon the way we set up the bid, which is at our discretion. We created a base bid, which is the minimum bid that we would afford, based of course on pricing. And then we have some add-on components in case we could talk to the FAA into additional funds or manage to get bid prices low enough to do other portions. We're not able to do that unfortunately with prices. So that's why we listed both the total bid amount and the base bid numbers in your staff report. So please keep those in mind. A responsiveness review was undertaken by John Smith of Tartalia Engineering, and he did declare that the apparent low bidder provided by Miller Equipment Company has been deemed responsive. Fiscal impact, I apologize, I was not aware of the 100% grant. So my staff report shows that a 5% match was required. That is incorrect. We have 100% grant due to COVID, so then that 36,500 that we thought we were going to need to budget for this project, we don't. So that's good news. And so the project is anticipated at 551-408 to be within the grant amount, including the design improvements and construction administration. So staff believes we can execute the project within the amount we see. And therefore, my recommendation is that you award the base bid of the storm drain improvements and detention basin construction project in the amount of 551,408 dollars. Miller Equipment Company authorized the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to the grant maximum of 664,430. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Jay. Anyone in the public who would like to ask a question? On the council? Do I have a motion on the item as stated?
Do we need to make the revision to the motion because of that discrepancy between the 5% and the 95% and 100%?
No, the motion's stated as it's just my expression.
Oh, I'm being assertive.
My expression is an error.
It's all, I'll make that.
Thank you. I'll say it again. Thank you, the motion and a second, call both please.
Councilmember Volun Corp?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schirner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
With a 5-0 vote to award the base bid of the storm drain improvements and detention basin construction project in the amount of 551,408 to Miller Equipment Company, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to the grant maximum of 664,430.
Thank you. Item 13, go ahead.
Thank you. The second item I have for you tonight is the 2021 Davis and Green Streets Road Rehabilitation Project. Just briefly, it's an assignment, this is actually kind of a banner moment. It may not feel like this is a simple road rebate, but under the leadership from non-marital loved works department, the city has spent, engineering and loved works has spent a lot of time trying to mobilize as many dollars as we can to roads in the last 18 months or so. And so this project actually represents the first budgeted general fund money for roads. We typically are focused on grants and more recently, the gas tax funds that have been coming to us, which we have been employing on roads. But this is an additional step forward. We're in good financial condition and able to do additional work on roads. So this is the first time we've done that. We hope to have a continued plan to continue spending funds in that way in coming years. So anyway, the item is rehabilitation of Davis and Green Street. I do think there is a map included there. That's probably the easiest way to depict the area in question. And the first project from this 10-year plan is this project. Advertising began in June. Staff opened bids for this project on July 15th, and the bid results are included in the staff report. We did perform a responsive review, responsiveness review of the bids received and deemed bid from RC Becker &amp; Son to be responsive to the project. It did come in under the engineer's estimate. That probably has mostly to do with RC Becker's mobilizing elsewhere in town for other work, and so we caught the advantage of that break in the bids. Fiscal impact, the project will be funded from the city's internal funds and funds were included in the adopted 2021-22 budget. And so my recommendation is that you award the 2021 Davis and Green Streets Road Rehabilitation Project, RC Becker &amp; Son, incorporated in the amount of 279,850.57, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to the 10% of the contract value for roughly 28,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Any comments from the public? Of the council? So this can be completely tear out and repaved?
I think it's just overlay, but it's not just the Seal Code. So it's a more significant improvement than that. These roads don't see heavy truck traffic, and so we're able to do less expensive treatments and still get good longevity out of those projects. So anyway, so these are tough, we've talked about this before. Roads like these are tough to get funded through grants because they're not major roads. And Caltrans, for instance, won't give us money to spend on small local roads. And so that's why this is kind of essentially a deal. We've spent a lot of time planning out how we can do it and working with finance to scrape the state and try to find the room and budget to begin tackling some of these. So this is a good first step.
Is there a hierarchy with streets that are on the list that are next? I mean, you've got a plan that says this street has to be next or?
Correct. We did have a 10-year plan generated. I do think that we did report on that, boy, it's been before COVID, you know what I think?
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
It's been a while though.
But yes, we do have a full 10-year plan, and we included in that, Don did, he really deserves the credit for this, pulling in grant cycles, RSDB, throwing in these funds, putting in extra gas tax revenue, and us trying to sequence, looking at our management plan and asking ourselves, okay, how much longer are we going to wait on this road? Or when should we do this one? And really try to study it and apply good practice to that. So yes, we do have long-term plan. So the money has to hold, obviously, you know, and as the economy goes up and down, you never quite know, but it's a good first step.
Thank you. So if your street's not on the list, we're getting them as soon as we have funding and basically, because we have a list of what needs to be done, so.
We have a list of every road in town and its quality, yes, so we're working through it.
And the races were on the streets that were with a story, those were really looking well. They were really good.
Those are gas tax funds that were used for that. So again, your tax revenue coming back.
Thank you. To the other comments, do I have a motion on item number 13 as stated?
I still do. All second.
There's a motion and a second, call both please.
Councilmember Volun Corp?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schirner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
With a 5-0 vote to award the 2021 Davis and Green Streets Road Rehabilitation Project to RC Becker &amp; Son in the amount of 279,850.57, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to 10% of the contract.
Thank you. Don and your crew, everyone involved on staff, thanks so much. Okay. Next item is tree planting. It's near and dear to everyone's heart here. Those who planted 2,500 trees earlier years ago, it really is showing. It's nice to help, so.
Very good, thank you. Mayor and council members, the last item for presentation tonight is the citywide tree planting stormwater capture project. So this one's been looked around for a couple of years, as you all will recall. So this is an urban green grant. This is a unique grant program that we have not applied for. This is prior to this project. But back in 2019, we were awarded a project to plant a significant number of trees, about 475 to be precise, along with some minor additional landscaping and stormwater capture features. Those are probably best described as drainage soils in unique places that take a lot off from the streets and get it back into the ground instead of, instead of laying away. Anyway, and we spent the last couple of years working through the challenges of that design. It was, it took us a while. It was a complicated design to pick up the pieces. It was also pretty difficult, although the folks at CNRA up in the state of California were very pleasant to work with, this was their, they got huge pot of money out of a proposition and never administered a grant program before. So, you know, not only were we rookies in their grant program, but they were rookies in their own grant program. So that's the reason it took us a while. So apologies, but we are excited to be here now, ready to award the project. So we began advertisement in April 2021. We opened bids on June 16th. The results of the bids are included below. We did perform a responsiveness review and deemed the bid received from Marina Landscaping to be responsive. The project again is funded through the year urban green grant program. No match is required. However, since we applied for this grant three years ago, and it's three years later, we had, we had only asked for $890,000 to do this project, and no additional grant funds were available to us. So since we got the bids, and again, that's why we did a month ago in our year now, we've been working with CNRA and with contractors to identify a path forward to execute this project despite the bidding difference. So we believe we've identified that path. It includes eliminating some minor portions of the project along the railroad run where the trees are sort of least associated with where we live. And then also working with Marina to identify some ways that after award of the project that we intend to work with them to bring down a few components of the project cost. Fortunately, we were able to salvage some significant amount of RDA funds that we had previously dedicated to the railroad safety project. That project came in below the work costs, largely due to lower than expected expenses with the railroad themselves. And so we may utilize RDA funds in accordance with our RDA established policy for the portion of this project that runs along the Hatchet Boulevard between A's out to the Pilot and Love's area, which is a significant portion of the planting area on this project as well. So we've been working with finance to have those excess RDA funds basically nestled away for this project, so that when we get towards the end and we're counting our pennies and adding them all up, that the funds are in place. So between those actions, staff is confident that the project funds are in place and no additional general funds will be necessary to complete the project. And therefore, we ask that you award the citywide tree planting and stormwater capture project to Marina Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $1,052,046, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to 5% or $52,600 for destruction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? To the council? Joe?
It'll just be nice to see things finally done, you know? I've seen these medians empty, and I always say something to my kids and they tease me about it because I say meridians, but anyway. And yeah, I've been waiting like the Cyclops for that to be done. So glad that something is taking place, yes.
Susan?
I too am happy. Every time I go on Facebook, I tell people that I have Facebook to stalk my adult children and see who hates me this way. But I go on Facebook once in a while and read when like there's 300 people wanting to know what we're going to do with Kmart for instance. Some kind of hot talking. And invariably, mixed in with that is, well, you know what happened with the trees? We never got those, they spent the money, blah, 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 blah. So I would really like a huge push from our PR department and the newspapers about, look what we are doing, here are pictures, we are putting the trees in. Because I just want to address that small faction that still believes that we take money and do weird things with it, so. Thank you.
Michael? I agree with the councilman, what he has, what's been said so far. But my comment is, when is this going to start? We're going to, if this is approved tonight, when can we expect a tree planted in the ground?
Trees will come last, so planting on irrigation and landscating projects always comes last. So my guess is spring, but I think you'll begin to see work before the end of August. So, you know, the heavy lift on these projects is actually irrigation, not planting. Planting will happen, I'm arguing, guys usually, it's how they do this stuff and they roll in and plant it out in the week. But there's a lot of irrigation work that has to go in the ground. There's a lot of coordination work to have irrigation services brought from, you know, point A across the road or across several roads to bring in. That's really where the design complications, not to bore you with my world too much, but that's where it really got tricky, is, okay, we've got an irrigation controller in two blocks that direction, how do we route the wiring or the control valves to the right location so that we can test where the real work was? And then also working with CNRA to identify trees that they would list and are specific lists of trees that we can select. And so we worked for a long time to try to find varieties that we thought would thrive here. So you'll see work before the end of August. I think knowing the way, you really want to plant in fall or spring. And so my guess is, is that you should expect the rains to occur in spring.
Okay, and another question, Jay. After we did all that curb and guttering and all the island After we did all that curb and guttering and all the islands on Curry, are they out to tear that out to put the irrigation in, or is there anything pre-fought that we put some irrigation in before they do whatever?
There should be a few small trenches, but largely the medians are accessible without digging up existing infrastructure. I don't expect to see any of the curbs be removed either on Valley, on Tashtry Boulevard, or on Curry. What I, it's possible the contractor will employ a boring machine to do it so that it's not done, but I think it's also possible to see some small trenching. So for the one you selected as an example, there'll probably be one trench across the road from where we have the irrigation controller we're utilizing now at the corner of East Orchard Parkway and Curry across the median, and in between the three median islands, you may see the trench connecting them together, but otherwise that would be the limit of the disruption to roadway.
Thank you.
You're smiling, that just means?
That's all been said.
Did you sell a lot of species of the same, or you got a variety?
Yeah, there's variety. Forgive me, I don't have the memorized. Andrew, more in my office, has been, has been working away at this one for a while, but I know there's some stuff that is really native. Pines and oaks are the primary selections that we made. We feel like oak trees do well up here in particular. Like, on Curry median, we also have, last thing, we have a really wide median, so we're able to put in a bigger species tree in those locations, so we're kind of excited to see what those might be like twenty years from now after some irrigation for a while, so.
We'll be watching. The other item is, like on Tashtry Boulevard, it did a lot of, really did some work in some of the trees with this weather lean. Is there going to be follow-up, you know, after their stake? Are they going to have two stakes or three, or is that specified?
Oh, yes. The design for the staking is extensive. It'll be at least two, sometimes three for the trees. And so we do try to do, we have instituted a number of additional policies between Public Works and Engineering, so that when we complete these projects, we're making sure that the brown spruce roots that we have here in the city are ready to accept those facilities and are satisfied with the way they are before we take them. So Don and I have been working on that front for the last year or two, and so when we turn them over, we work hard to turn them over into good condition, and then from there, it's Public Works maintaining.
Because we like tree to trees.
Agree, yeah. That's a species selection issue, too. It's interesting, which, you know, some, some trees just seem to not be bothered by that at all. Oaks are a good example, whereas you can get a pine, certain species of pines will get completely one-sided. So we did, spent time trying to favor the case.
And on the east Tashpeople Boulevard, are the trees going to be planted between the roadway and the bike path?
That's correct.
It just seems really close to the airport.
It's not like the, between there, yeah, and we, again, that was a big species selection discussion, picking species that tend to be relatively vertical in the lower seven to ten feet, so that we would minimize how much tree trimming we had to do to keep them from being hazard, you know, so, again, I don't recall the species, but I recall having all these conversations with Andrew as he's pushing through the design. So yes, we did put on that, and we're aware of the narrow space, but we are hoping to pick something that will get up seven, ten feet and then start fresh out.
Only asking because everyone in the town is going to be watching what we're doing.
Yeah, I understand.
Those people, did they think about it? Yes. I think they're going to be pleased.
All right. Well, thank you for your report, and do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember voting, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Schriever?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith? Yes.
With a five-zero vote to award the citywide tree planting and stormwater capture project to Marina Landscaping in the amount of one million fifty-two thousand forty-six dollars and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to five percent for destruction.
Thank you.
There's quite a difference on the bids. I mean, one was like fifty percent more for forty percent.
Yeah. It's, it's the major bidding. We've always had a tough time getting big landscaping projects done up here. Both of these companies are LA-based, and it's hard to talk them into coming up here to do a landscape only. If you recall, we did that in House Estates, when we were doing that Monte market, we didn't get, and we, for what it's worth, we called a dozen places and told them about the bid and asked them to consider us, and we still got the bids, so.
We'll take it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember report. We'll start on the left. Christina?
Eleven.
I'd love to hear from you.
Susan?
Well, I have a silly question. Don will probably think it silly. You've put in all the nice slurry seals, and then you've gone around and you painted the half of the crosswalk that was slurry sealed, but this half of the crosswalk has not been painted. Is that going to be painted later? If I wasn't so OCD, I wouldn't have.
We can come back and paint the other half, sure.
There's several around the school that's linked up.
Around Hockins?
Hockins, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no silly question by council. John?
I'm just delighted to see all the improvements in town, all the new road construction curbs. Hopefully, it'll get on the north side of Valley one of these days, and I just think it makes our town look great. I worked at Depot this weekend, and people, this town is so cute, you know? And they can see the improvements and so on and so forth, so it's great to see our, the city's work at actually taking place, so.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn to closed session. And if there's anything to be reported, we will come back to this room and report out anything that's in possession. Thank you all.
Is that one for me?